Good evening. I'm James Bell and tonight I'll be serving as the Chair. This is the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for February 6th, 2025. The agenda for today's meeting is available on the table outside. If you did not get one, you may wish to pick one up. We will follow the agenda and call up the cases in the order that they are listed on the agenda. The first matter of business is citizens' comments. Any citizen wishing to appear before a regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding any matter posted on the agenda was to sign up no later than 6:00 PM on the day of the meeting. If anyone signed up to speak, they will have three minutes. Staff will time each citizen and provide a warning when they have 30 seconds left. Okay, thank you. The next matter of business is the approval of the minutes for the following meeting. January 23rd, 2025 Planning and Zoning Commission called meeting.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Robert? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries eight to zero. The next matter of business are the zone cases. When we call up your zone case, the following steps will be taken. The Chair will call the first case and will invite city staff to take their presentation on the case. The Board may ask staff questions, but board comments and debates should not occur. The Chair opens the public hearing on the case. The Chair will then call applicant representative to provide any additional comment. The applicant will need to clearly state their name and address for the record and briefly explain their case. After the applicant has spoken, the Chair asks for anyone in opposition of the item to speak. Those speaking in opposition should give their name and address, then speak to the Board. The Chair will then ask for anyone in favor of the item to speak. Those speaking in favor should give their name and address, then speak to the Board. After all public comments, the Chair will close the public hearing. Once the public hearing is closed, we will not hear any further comments from the public. The first item that we will be hearing today is item 3.1, Zone Case 437-C.
Good evening Chairman and members of the Commission. My name is Shane Spencer and this is Zone Case 437-C. The request is from Michael Session and Raymond and Gail Lemon. They're requesting a specific use for a manufactured home subdivision on properties owned SF2. The property is located north of East Broadway and west of David Avenue. We have sent out 39 notices and we've received back one in favor. Here's that notification map showing the one in favor. Here's the aerial map. The surrounding area is primarily vacant lots with agricultural land to the south. And here's the zoning map and the surrounding area is zoned all SF2. Here are photos of the subject property and the surrounding property. And here are some photos provided by the applicant. The middle photo and the photo on the right are primarily showing the intersection of East Broadway and David. The proposed specific uses in conformance with the zoning ordinance, the proposed specific use is compatible with the surrounding area will not change the character of the existing development, and it is located along East Broadway which is designated as a collector by the Master Thoroughfare Plan. Staff has no objection to this request and I'd be happy to take any questions at this time.
Does anyone have questions for the staff at this time? Okay, thank you. We'll now open the public hearing. Is the applicant or his or her representative here and wish to speak? If you could please state your name and address for the record, please, sir.
My name is Michael Session. My address is 5609 Jarvis Street. Good evening to each of you. This property belongs to my parents. It did have a single family home there, which became unlivable. I did have it tore down. And now I'm just requesting for the zoning change in order for the manufactured home to be placed there to be able to provide for living for myself. I'm planning on moving into that myself. So that property won't just be sitting empty.
Anyone have questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to this request? Okay, seeing none. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Okay, seeing none. We'll close the public hearing. For matter of discussion, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve is presented.
Oh, a second. We have a motion and a second discussion? No discussion? Okay, we'll go ahead and call a question. All of those in favor of Zone Case 437-C, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries eight to nothing. Next item on our agenda is item 3.2, Zone Case Number 3516.
Hello Board. I'm Greg Hernandez with the Plan Department and this is Zone Case 3516. The applicant is Hugo Reading Associates, Inc. for Elliott Araro Seco LTD. Requesting a rezone from low-density single-family to heavy commercial district. Forty-four letters were sent out. We received zero back in favor and one in opposition. The property is located east of University Avenue and south of 114th. Here's a notification map showing the one in opposition. The opposition is south of the property and outside the city limits. The main concern is that the zone change could damage the value of adjoining properties. Here's the aerial view of the property. To the south and east are the city limits. To the north is vacant land being developed with a new tractor supply in Circle K and to the west is a residence and commercial businesses. The current land use map shows the properties to the north zoned heavy commercial and to the west zoned low-density single-family and auto-urban commercial and to the east and south, outside city limits. The future land use map designates this property for commercial uses. Here are pictures of the subject property as well as views to the south, west, and north. Here's a, this slide is provided by the applicant showing what is being asked for in the zoning request. The future land use map designates this area for commercial land use. The proposed zone change to HC is in conformance with this designation and is appropriate at this location. The proposed zone change is in conformance with the zoning ordinance and will be appropriate at the proposed location. The proposed zone change is compatible with the surrounding area and will not change the character of the existing development. The property is adjacent to heavy commercial district and the city limits, minimizing the impact on residential properties in the area. The subject property is located on University Avenue, which is designated as a principal arterial and 114th Street, which is designated as a minor arterial by the Master Thoroughfare Plan 2018. Staff has no objection to this request and I can take any questions at this time.
Thank you Greg. Anyone have questions for staff at this time? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is the applicant or his or her representative here and wish to speak? Good morning, Mr. Holman. If you could please state your name and address for the record, please.
Terry Holman, Hugo Reading Associates, Ward 1601, Avenue N. I thought I had 100% smooth sailing on this until I was made aware this morning of one email that came in in opposition and I'll address that in a moment. There's not a whole lot that I can add to this. I'm working for Larry Elliott on this property. He wants to do office warehouse, maybe some heavy retail upfront. We've just been doing some conceptual planning, but we realized we needed HC zoning to get this done. So that's our request this evening. I was made aware this morning of the gentleman that Gregory mentioned who was in opposition. He is outside the city limits. I did send an email to him. There's none of those. I'm afraid his opposition, he may not have fully understood kind of what the request was. He was stating that, you know, we had very little restrictions on the zoning that we were requesting. However, he has zero restrictions on his property because he's outside the city limits. I pointed out that, I pointed that out to him in an email. Went and took some pictures of the property. I don't believe anything we do that would in any way detract from any of the values on these surrounding properties. This is in an area that's been sort of grown organically over the years is sort of what I would call light industrial and we're just matching up with that, quite frankly. So, but just to point out, I did at least send a communication to the gentleman this morning. I didn't hear anything back after that. I feel like our request is merit stands on its own and will be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Anyone have questions for applicant at this time? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to this request? If so, please come forward and state your name. Okay, seeing none. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor? Okay, seeing none. We'll close the public hearing. For matter of discussion, do we have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Who started again?
Robert?
Drew. Okay, discussion on this? Looks pretty even to me. We've got the other side that's going to be commercial. The other part back is outside the city, but it's also kind of a commercial industrial type area. So I see no problem with it myself.
Yeah, if this were, if the city limits were to go south and we annexed that land, what would the zoning be on that tract to the south as it, as it got annexed in?
So if the property to the south petitioned the city and asked to be annexed in, property automatically gets annexed as SF2, low-density, single-family residential because it's the most restrictive. And then they could petition and request a zone change for heavy commercial or industrial zoning?
And actually, state law allows for use to continue if we annex. So they wouldn't even have to get a zone change.
Similar to what SF2, but it would be like a transitional until the ownership changed or ceased doing that type of business there? Is that correct?
Right. There are a handful of things that could cause it, yeah. But they're allowed to continue operation as is.
What do you specifically call that? Do you call that non-conforming? Okay. Any other discussion we might have? Okay, we'll go ahead and call the vote. All in favor of Zone Case 3516, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries eight to zero. Next item is item 3.3, Zone Case 3174-D.
All right. This is Zone Case 3174-D. The applicant is AMD Engineering LLC for Texas District LCMS and Generation 1 LLC. Request to rezone from SF2 and HC to HDR. Sixty-one letters were sent out and we received 38 back in favor, 30 outside the notification boundary, 12 which we received today, and 18 in opposition, 3 outside of the notification boundary, 1 of which we received today. The property is located west of University and south of 19th Street. Here's a notification map showing all the notifications in the area. Some of the reasons listed are increase in population and traffic, the alley being used for access, the area not being large enough and negatively impacting the area. Here is the aerial view of the property. To the north is Texas Tech. To the east is a hotel. To the west is a student center. And to the south is parking lots and residence. Here is a zoning map showing the properties to the north is zoned low-density, single-family. To the east and west zoned high-density residential. And to the south, low-density, single-family and neighborhood commercial. The future land use map designates this property for commercial uses. Here are pictures of the subject property as well as views from west, north, and east. This slide is provided by the applicant showing what is being rezoned. Here are some of the uses allowed in both heavy commercial district and high-density residential district. The future land use map designates this area for commercial land use. While the proposed zone change to HDR is not in conformance with the designation, it is appropriate in this location as the HDR district does allow for a combination of residential, commercial, and mixed uses. The proposed zone change is in conformance with the zoning ordinance and will be appropriate at the proposed location. The proposed zone change is compatible with surrounding area and is adjacent to HDR zoning to the east and west. The subject property is located on 19th Street, which is designated as a principal arterial by the Master Thoroughfare Plan 2018. And staff has no objection to this request and I can take any questions at this time.
If we have any questions for staff at this time? Thank you very much. We'll now open the public hearing. Is the applicant or his or her representative here and wish to speak?
Good evening. Corey Doolan with AMD Engineering at 6515 68th Street. I'm going to, I'm going to introduce Tyler Pearlmutter. He's the owner and he will be providing this great presentation to you guys, but just wanted to introduce him and introduce this project. This is third or fourth project to come before this Board for this site. I feel like this, this proposal is by far the best presentation and proposal for this property and best meets the needs, not only the community in the area and the students that are going to be served by this property, that attend Texas Tech, but is also the best fit for the area and complements the area and, and provides a better site there along 20th Street. So certainly support this project, but want to introduce the owner and I'm here for questions should you have them.
Good evening. Tyler Pearlmutter, Pinecrest, 430 Park Avenue, Highland Park, Illinois. First wanted to start off and thank each of you for your service to the city. And I also wanted to thank the Tech Terrace neighborhood, who's been very gracious with their time. As I've gotten into this project, I can tell there's a ton of passion here, a ton of integrity and the functionality of this neighborhood is super important. I can tell you that we are the developer to, to match those concerns and make sure that those are addressed in the proposal. A little bit about us. So we were established in 1998 by my grandfather. Our principles have more than 35 years together. We are very hands-on in all facets of our developments and our projects. And right now, we currently have two operating companies. The first is Pinecrest, which is the company that I'm responsible for, which is a student living development company. And then IAC Properties, which focuses on industrial warehouse distribution. We, we have some very important partnerships that you can see, but you know, really what our company motto is that we create communities that keep residents in school. So from the onset of every project we do, we think about how are our amenities and how is everything that we're doing going to keep residents in school, which we know is, is the purpose that, you know, they're at Tech. This is just our organizational chart. We have early on started working with Tyne Art Construction. We like to use a local group. We know they have a big presence here and they've been a great help so far. We're also working with AMD. You saw Corey briefly before this. And then Lassard Design, who is not local but has a ton of experience in student housing, is here as well today to give some detail if needed. Very briefly, we have developed 200, 2,343 beds so far. We currently have a project that we're starting next month in College Station. And then if this project is successful, that would be our next project. I'll go through these very briefly as well. This is the project I mentioned at Texas A&amp;M. It's in Northgate. What I would mention about all of these projects is they're, they're very specific to the area that they're in. So we don't have one set style. These two happen to be more of a high-rise. This project at University of Tennessee is five stories, fits in with the neighborhood. Here's a project we did at the University of Pittsburgh and then University of Delaware and Boise State. I'm going to get into some of the meat of the presentation. I'm going to start with a little bit of a zoning analysis and a couple of the other items that are on this section. So as, as mentioned, what we're asking for tonight, or what we're going for here is a zone change from heavy commercial to high-density residential, as well as there is a small portion that is zoned SF2. We would also ask for that to be zoned, rezoned HDR. A very key piece of this is the site accessibility. So we'll kind of get into this as I show the site plan. But the 19th Street entrance, that is the only entrance that's going to be, the only way to get into the parking. There will be no entrance to the public on 20th Street. And also right now, the parking is three times the requirement. On 20th Street, as you know, the last project, there was, there was call for a building on there. I think at first it was a large building, then it was a, some to townhomes. We're going to keep it as a surface lot and we're going to revitalize it. We have some pictures. That will only be accessible through the 19th Street going through our garage. There will be a fire exit and, you know, a safety exit that can only be accessible by, by those parties. We, again, there will be no, no vertical structure on 20th Street, which is a big difference. And then the alley access and two-way traffic. So it's a little hard to visualize, but essentially the way that you will get into the 20th, to the service lot that's on 20th Street is you will pull through the 19th Street. You'll be on 19th Street, you'll pull through our garage. The only way to open the gate on 20, in the lot on 20th will be inside of the 19th Street parking lot. So you cannot, if you're going down the alley either way and you're trying to park in the lot that will be on the 20th Street, you won't be able to open that. And then again, traffic. So all residential, all residential entry and exit on 19th Street, there will be no public, no public exit or entry on 20th. And then again, by revitalizing the parking lot, it's, it's pretty unsightly. Right now, we have some images of how that will look. Another way that we intend to kind of alleviate traffic is by routing our residents to the bus stop. That's one block away. And they're, Route 5 and 49 go right into campus. So we think that will alleviate traffic as well. And then we also plan on doing a ride share in food delivery area that will reduce traffic. I'm going to call up Joseph, our architect, to kind of walk through the traffic study if that's all right.
Good evening. Joseph Amati, Principal of Lizard Design, 8521 Leesburg Pike, Vienna, VA. I will discuss shortly this slide. So basically, the main concern that we had for this site, and not just only for this site, but any student housing or multifamily site of this magnitude, is the impact on traffic. Now, the impact on traffic in two different variations, whether it be in a vehicular traffic or pedestrian traffic. The main goal was here to understand the five minutes and 10 minutes radius of pedestrian walking to the site. Now, as you can see, there are two circular lines. The first one is a five-minute radius, which shows how, how much will it take for students to walk to the campus and how far they would get. The next one is the 10-minute ride. 10-minute walk also shows your distance if you would wanted to drive this distance as well. Those blue lines show the possibility of basic directions that the students can take. Now, one of the main concerns when we started looking at this project was to prevent traffic from going inside the alleyway and the 20th Street. Therefore, the design was basically done in a way that the surface lot parking located adjacent to the 20th Street is right against the parking lot within our main, main structure. Therefore, for you to access that parking lot, you would go through the parking lot, get into the surface lot and go out. One of the main philosophies in urban design that we kind of try to follow all the time is that if you want people to don't use a line, you need to provide a better solution for them to basically use. Therefore, driving in the alleyway today myself was pretty evident for somebody, if anybody drives there one time, that is probably going to be the last time they will use that alleyway because it's very narrow. It's not a very, a basic common path of travel. Therefore, if we provide a better direction, that means going out from the surface lot and from the parking lot straight to the 19th Street, commonly, most of the students will use that direction. Now, in addition to that, we have, we are using basically signage to prevent people from turning into the alleyway. At the same time, we are providing fence around the, around the parking lot and the fence is controlled by a gate. The gate will open simultaneously with the gate inside the parking garage. So people can come access inside and leave without having to turn inside the alleyway. This is going to be a more straight access way. Therefore, we believe people ultimately will use that along with the operation and basically the control that we have on site, we will be able to make that happen. At the same time, the site is located, we're showing significant masterpiece architecture within the, within that location and the distance that will take for people to walk to those buildings, which is mostly within the TerrisTech campus environment. And ultimately, we were trying to point out that this site is located very close to the campus. And with future operation and good scheduling, we are, we are able to basically make sure that people will mostly walk to the campus as opposed to drive to the campus. While that will not be the full percentage, but most of the percentage of the students will use the campus through walking to the campus as opposed to driving.
I will turn back.
Okay, and, and this was mentioned previously. This is just a map of where the site is compared to the city bus stop. And again, it gives a pretty good coverage into campus from, from our site. I'll walk through the site plan. So this is the typical, this is the ground floor. As we were, I don't know if the mouse works, yeah. So as we, as we've kind of been discussing, a resident will, will come down 19th Street, take a right into the parking garage. If they happen to be permitted to, to use the surface lot, they'll come through this parking garage. They'll get to about here. There'll be a reader in their car and it'll open up this gate and this gate at the same time. The only way that this gate down here will open to the 20th Street lot is by being, by being a reader that, that gets activated inside of this garage. So you cannot, you won't be able to come down this alley and take a right or come down the alley this way and take a left into the lot. We also can educate our residents on, on this is the way that you should do it. So that's how we're looking to mitigate that. A couple of things to point out here is on the ground floor, we do have retail. We'll have a leasing office and some type of amenity. And then there, there's two courtyards. This is very conceptual, but the idea is to have outdoor space for our residents. This is a more typical floor plate with the residential. And then you get to the roof, sorry, the, the last floor, the fifth floor. And this is where our parking, our pool is. And you know, this, this has been adjusted since some of our meetings with Tech Terrace, with the, with the neighborhood in that, you know, we, we heard that there was a little bit of concern about the pool coming all the way to the end of the, the edge of the building. So we've reduced the pool, made it smaller. We're planning on screening it in. And really, the plan here is to make this more of a relaxed zen pool. And the way that we can do that is, one, we don't allow any alcoholic beverages on our, in any of our public areas. And we also can access control the times that you can go out there. So during the weekdays, we can have the doors locked at 9:00 PM. No one can go out there after 9:00 PM. And then the weekends, it'll probably be about 10:00 PM. And then we also have security that can help make sure that those rules are being followed. Very quickly, just to refresh everyone, this was the, the last project that was proposed. So again, they were asking for variants, variances of the UDC going much closer to the, the lot lines. Some of the, the key differences, as I mentioned, was we are not building a structure on 20th. They were proposing that. We are not asking for any variances to the code. And then I, I would say that we sincerely, from the start, have really tried to have open communication with the stakeholders. And we are, we are and we will continue to be open to feedback to make sure that everyone is happy with how this building ends up looking. These are some of the conceptual renderings. So these are on 19th Street on the top. That would be like a, a street on look. The bottom photo is, is the retail. It's very important to us that we get a retailer that is an amenity to our residents as well as to Tech Terrace. It is not about filling the retail space just to fill the space. It's about getting the right tenant. We, it's super important to us. We view that as an amenity and it's something that we can kind of push off of, of our plate so we can focus on operating the building. so we could focus on operating the building. But it's an amenity that, if you get the right retailer there, can really help the building and the neighborhood. These are just the building sections, as we mentioned. I would just note that the pool here, you can see, is on the, on the fourth level. And then, there's a green wall which will screen in the pool, and that's intentional so that there's going to be no sightlines from the pool into the backyards on 20th Street. I will turn it back over to Joseph to kind of go through some of the design approach that we did for the project.
Thank you. First of all, I would like to thank, I think, several of the community members provided some great feedback and some great references on the previous meeting. I don't know the name of those individuals, but they had a big part in how we looked at this project throughout design. I think our main approach, as you know, we are designing a building in a very beautiful neighborhood. Tech Terrace Campus is one of the beautiful, one of the most beautiful campuses in the US, maybe the world. There is some significant heritage and culture and architecture existing, not only on the 19th Street, but also on the university itself. So it is very hard to design in such an environment because, at the same time, we need to respect the character, the history. But we are designing in 2025. Therefore, we need to come to a unique design, which not only complements the existing architecture, but provides something new. So maybe the next generation of people will come here and stand and defend it against a new construction coming on the 19th Street 50 years from today. So our main goal was to understand that architecture. I know probably all of you know the administrative building of Tech Terrace. That is probably one of the oldest buildings constructed in 1925. It was built and designed after one of the famous universities in Spain. And that's where the Spanish architecture basically comes from, is driving from that location. And now, looking at the different buildings, whether it be in the administrative building or the architecture building, which was built in 1970, if I'm not mistaken, we were trying to, we tried to understand what are the main principles of design within those buildings. Now, looking at those buildings, we understand proportion, the triplet design impact, which I'm going to get into later on, the covered walkways, arced windows, and the use of materials and color and tone within the building are the basic or the main conceptual design driven for those architectural architectures. Now, at the same time, we looked at three different buildings in detail. One was the administrative building, the historical gold world building, which was existing in the location of the site before. And also, we have these mansions within the 19th Street, which also have some significant value within 19th Street history and heritage. Those buildings were basically used to come up with the main concept. Now, as we start with the administrative building and any other building within this campus, we can understand that the buildings are basically designed with three elements. You have the focal elements from the center. You have the two major elements on the corner, which basically ties the building to the ground and acts as a nail that basically holds the building to the ground. So as you look at the building, the building looks like a very strong building, which is tied to this ground. And as you can see, those conceptual images below show the simplified version of how that design came to life and how that translates to our building design as well to the right portion. Then, the next basically principle was the tripride principle, which is the three-section principle. The same principle we see today here has drive us to come to the postmodern architecture as well. And the whole idea in this principle is to divide the building into three sections. You have the base section, which is the section me and you will mostly see and be visible to us. Then you have the base section, which is visible from a distance, and the top section is typically visible from far away. Therefore, and the idea is that you have to have more concentration on the base because that is where people see the most. And you can levy down and become lighter as you go up. And the focal point in the center is where you basically have the language and talk about the building and drive people towards the building. And the same concept was used in our design, which we get into. At the same time, we have some smaller-scale mansion-like architecture within 19th Street. Those also have a significant impact on the heritage of this neighborhood and the community. So we try to also take some languages from that architecture and combine it with our building to become a cohesive language that not only complements the 19th Street architecture, but also complements the history of her, the history and heritage of the architecture of Tech Terrace. Symmetry and pattern is seen throughout. I think one of the greatest architecture was the architecture building done in 1970. I think Jim and Jerry designed that building. And as you see, that building is very much different from the administrative building in design, but at the same time, it complements that building because it's using similar conceptual shapes and forms and materials. And then, as we go through, we have the arcades that come from basically the environment here, the warm weather. And also, at the same time, looking at the mansions on the 19th Street, they all have an entry point and a canopy, which defines their basic architecture. So we wanted to use that element in our building to somehow connect ourselves with the existing architecture. And therefore, as you go through the process, starting from our basic linear cube and come down, ultimately, we come to a building design which, to some degree, tries to use the basic conceptual elements of the existing architecture. You have the main entry point piece, which is pretty much similar to the same concept idea in the administrative building. And other buildings, you have the two corner elements that act as the same elements you have in other buildings in the area and tie the building to the ground. At the same time, we are using a lot of recess back and forth to divide the building into different sections. Because the building is linear, therefore, with this division, as you walk through the 19th Street, each perspective will give you a singular perspective. In theory, you would never see this view. This is a bird's eye view that you would not see, and you would basically see viewers more closer to the building. Therefore, the building is experienced as you walk through the 19th Street as opposed to seeing the building at once. And you will see portions of the building. On the base level, as you can see, we have designed a unique canopy with arcade column on the bottom. It resembles the previous canopy used on the 19th Street, but it also has a touch of modern feel and style because we are designing in today's world. Corner piece element that ties the building to the ground with the cafe. We tried to kind of explore an idea to build that corner element and drive people towards the cafe, create a place for people to meet and create a sense of community not between, not only for the residents, but all the, not only for the residents of the project, but also the residents of the neighborhood. This is a closer view of the cafe and how interacts with the exterior elements and how basically the canopy itself would create a very unique feel, but at the same time, would make it very similar to the existing architecture on the 19th Street. A small view looking at the details, one of the main elements of the architecture in Tech Terrace is basically the detailing of the facade, which we will try to implement details within the facade. This shows the before, after, the today's image, and what we will see in future. On the 20th Street, there is a parking lot. Our proposal is to create a 25-foot setback, make that 25-foot setback a green setback that basically complements the 20th Street environment and character. At the same time, we are designing a fence on the back end to prevent the look of the parking, so people will not see the cars parked as they walk. But at the same time, it will be a safety matter that a lot of residents have, would be, to some degree, met. But yes, we do have a fire access, fire access door or crash door, which is only accessible by authorities having jurisdiction for emergency and fire access rescue. Then, when it comes to material, we have tried to use the same color palette within the neighborhood, which is a warm color tone palette, use of brick in certain locations, use of the colors that complement the existing architecture within the neighborhood as seen. While we are open to changes, this is just the beginning and the initial idea. And any comments or any feedback, we will definitely take into consideration and try to improve our design as we go through the process. Thank you.
So I'll go through the building height. So we are, if we do get the zoning to HDR, the allowable height is 75 feet. Right now, the building is designed at 60 feet and then 65 at the parapet. So, you know, as you can see, these are just some comparable properties, comparable buildings in the market, and we will be shorter than all of these. Jumping into parking, so as I mentioned earlier, as designed, we are three times greater than the requirement. So right now, we have 315 parking spaces planned. The requirement would be 108 parking spaces. So the surplus would be 207 spaces extra or three times. This, this compares to our portfolio. I think there's, there's two key things here. Our average portfolio for the parking-to-units ratio is 1.4. This project will be 1.5. And also, our average parking occupancy has been around 66%. So we are not filling up our parking lots. And I do recognize every market is different, but this is a sample of five different markets, six different markets. Some key features, security is incredibly important to us. You know, we recognize that we have mostly young adults living here, their first time living in an apartment without their parents. So it's just, it's very important to us. We do have onsite full-time staff, and then we have after-hours security guards. We plan on putting over 200 cameras in the, throughout the building. Everything will be key fob from the front door to the elevators up to your unit. And then, as I mentioned, we can control the hours that those fobs allow doors to open. And then, we do have a pretty extensive resident handbook, which includes rules and regulations. And as I mentioned, you know, there, we have a, we have a zero, zero tolerance policy for drugs, weapons, and drinking in public spaces. So there was also a concern about dog breeds, so we're open to, you know, kind of what the, what the neighborhood thinks is appropriate, but we don't have an issue with having restrictions on certain dog breeds. Regarding trash, all dumpsters serving the property will be internal, so there will be, there won't be, you know, a big mountain of trash somewhere out in front. And we also, I believe it'll be a private pickup, so we can kind of scale that up as needed. We do know that there are certain times when there's a lot more trash, like the first move-in or, you know, some of the summer months when people are moving out, so we can control that. And then, every floor will have a trash chute and recycling chute. And then, regarding the pool, we did move it back a little bit. We're really going to push to make this not a party pool with all the different safety valves we have in place. And then, as I mentioned, you know, being able to handle the times when people can use them. These are just pictures of the last project that we just built. These are, it's in Richmond, Virginia. The, you know, the colors are more specific to that market, but this is, you know, the type of quality that we're, that we're going for. The most important amenity for us are amenities that are study, study space and educational space. So we, we do dedicated study space within the residential floors. Our units are fully furnished. We have 24/7 package lockers. We have a maker's space. We love trying to incorporate local art. I know that's super important to the neighborhood here, and that's important to us as well. And then, briefly, some benefits. So fire and sewer upgrades, we will be bearing the cost for those. We also will be widening and repaving parts of the alley. Regarding, you know, just Tech Terrace in general, you know, we truly are a committed, open developer who wants to work with the neighborhood to make sure that this is a building that they, they are proud of and like how it looks. And then, again, benefits to Texas Tech. I can say I go to, you know, universities all over the country, and there's a lot of really, really nice student housing that's being built right now, and that's the kind of product we want to build here. And, you know, we don't, we don't want Texas Tech to fall behind in that regard. So that's kind of, that's kind of the presentation. I'm not sure if there's, if you have anything else, but I think we're good to go. So.
Does anyone have questions for the app then at this time?
Yeah, I have a good question for you. So of all the properties you listed that you've built, do you, does your company currently own those properties?
Yeah, so we, I can go back to the, we, the first four, so the bridge on Forbes, One East and the Vista and the Knox, we owned up until 2022. We started developing them in 2013. So we owned them for almost 10 years. Right now, we own Parkview, and then we will, we were starting construction on the College Station project next month.
Got a question too. Go back in your talk, but I know you've got the pool, you put it back to not have visibility to the neighbors on the 23rd. What about the residences? What kind is that to do for looking back out at the residences and backyards there?
Yeah, so I think you're talking about...
On the 20th Street side?
Yeah, there's a good rendering here. Sorry for jumping around. Here. So there's a couple of things that we're doing. So if you look, and Joseph, you want to jump in? Feel free. But essentially, the, these are going to be, this is a hallway right here, so there won't be residential windows there. And then, this will be a terrace, and the way that we've designed it, I'm not sure if it's in this presentation, is that it's also going to be walled in and vegetation. So like, if you're sitting on that terrace and you look straight across, you won't be able to see above that. If that makes sense.
Okay, thank you.
And I think regarding the pool, if we go to that section that we shared earlier, I actually, this section here, I actually put a distance here. There is a distance of right now, eight, close to 90 feet from the pool to the edge of our building. And at the same time, we have a four-feet wall in front of it along with a green fence on top. So I'm showing on the exhibit a person that is standing here, and the view you're seeing is the view the person is able to see, which is going to be the sky. There is no possible way for them to be able to see down towards the neighborhood at all at this location.
Okay, thank you very much.
I have a question. With regards to parking, you did state that the cafe will be utilized not only by the residents, but also by the neighbors and the people around, correct?
Correct.
Where is that additional parking going to be for those people that are going to be visiting that cafe and not necessarily staying at the residence? Where would they park?
Yeah, so, let me find the right. So how we, this is, it's conceptual, but the plan is that basically, there will be, like, there'll be some sort of gate right here, and that's where the residential parking will begin. So if you were just coming in to use, let's say, to grab a cup of coffee and you want to park your car, you'll still be able to pull into the, into the building, but you won't be able to get past this gate. So there will be some guest parking right here. And, and we also need, we will probably have one or two spaces for future resident parking. So like, if you, if you schedule a tour, you know, you can come and park there. But we've done this before where you, you pull in and that part is unsecured, and then there's a, you know, a gate where it starts the secured parking.
Anyone else have any other questions?
Any idea on how many spots for the cafe or not yet?
How many parking spaces?
Like for the cafe?
Yeah, I think nine, yeah, nine spaces.
One for every 300 square.
So you said it's 65 feet at the parapet?
Yeah.
So that's the tallest point on the entire building, which is up towards 19th Street, correct?
Correct.
And then, as you move back towards 20th Street and you lower down to the four, to the four-story portion of your building, what is that approximate height?
Forty-five.
Yeah, 45.
Any other, any other questions for the app then at this time? We'll say thank you.
Thank you.
You had a very good presentation here.
Thank you.
More so than we've had on the previous ones that have come to us.
Do you want me just to leave that on or...
That's fine. Is, is there anyone here to speak in opposition? If so, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Excuse me, sometimes we get to the point where it's a little hard to get up. My name is...
My name is Lauren Prather. I live at thirty-one oh-eight Twentieth Street, right down here, in a house that my family and I have been in since nineteen fifty. Benefactor of Roscoe Wilson. Matter of fact, I think, I'm sure, I'm pretty sure that Principal Savage, I was the tenth person she ever whipped, but I'm not sure. J.T. Hutch, everything else. And then, since ninety-three, my wife and I have been back on Twentieth Street. I have a pretty good understanding and feel for what's going on in this neighborhood for a lot of years. And what I want to say, first of all, is how much I am impressed with the change that they made from whatever it was, two or three, whatever it was before. They have really been responsive, been really trying to make this thing work and trying to come up with a way to make this thing fit where, where they're trying to build it. The biggest problem that I have, and it's not gonna go away, is people that don't understand students at Texas Tech, because everybody brings a car. They're, they're always here. They always have plenty. And my main concern, I'm glad they did the stuff with Twentieth, because that was my concern before, and they've kind of got it segregated. But my main concern, if other than density, is the fact that when those residents... Well, first of all, is to have enough spaces for people to come see them. They're, not to put them on Twentieth or Twenty-first, but when, when these residents leave, they're gonna go east to university. They're gonna go one block south to Twentieth, and they're gonna go back to Boston. And then, they're gonna hit the light, and then they're gonna go west, because you can't get west, except for to go around that loop. So, if you want to do something really interesting, drive from Boston to university on Twentieth, Twenty-first, Twenty-second, and Twenty-third during the day. And you can see what I'm talking about and how many it is. So, my main concern is accommodation of the number of cars that are gonna be there and that are gonna need to be there. And also, there're gonna be people come visit, where are they gonna park? They're gonna be on the street. And the other way that you really want to see what goes on is come down to my house, almost of Indiana when Tech plays basketball, and see what happens on Twentieth, because it's, it's plenty of cars. And then, Twenty-second is, is been cut down to no, no through lanes. So, you ought to try Twenty-second between those two streets. So, we're not against the project as, as it is intended. We really appreciate the, the changes that they've made. And we think it will be an attribute to the neighborhood, the way they've segregated Twentieth off, because that was the reason why that we killed it the first time, because they were doing so much on Twentieth Street. Started R-one, last time I did the chat, oh, by the way, I'm sorry. I've, I've been an economic development consultant for thirty years, and I spent five years working for the city of Lubbock in the development department. So, I have some feel of what all this takes. And, and I, I know that there's some opportunities that need to be here, and there's some things that they can do. And I think they're trying to make the adjustments that need to be made. But last time I did research, thirty-eight percent of the homeownership in, in the neighborhood were non-resident owners. So, we, we have blossomed into a lot of rentals and a lot of other things. They're good. They, they don't hurt the neighborhood. They take care of everything. And I think these people that move in here will be the same. So, I just think you need to be somewhat cautious in the fact of the number of cars that are gonna be there and, and what's gonna take to accommodate that density and that amount of cars. And with that, I respect more than you know what y'all do, because I used to have to be the resource for, for P and Z. So, thank you so much, and, and we appreciate any help you can give us. Thank you.
Mr. Prather, before you walk away, would you, because I don't live in that part of town. Could you tell me, you talked about parking in front of your house along the streets. I know at one time, they had an ordinance where you had to have a sticker or some kind of permit to park. Are they, is that still the case? Or, or exactly what is the parking situation in Tech Terrace on the first four or five streets?
Lucky enough for me, my mother got the neighbors to ban it. So, my side, you can't park it all. But across the street, what they've done is during tech hours. So, it's like eight to five, and then you can park without a permit. And then, there's, there may be a couple of areas with permits, but most of it is, it's just a limited parking during the school day. And then, it kind of changes. But all that goes awry when there's an event going on at, at Tech. Whether it be basketball, football, whatever it is, kind of, everybody just kind of ignores it. And then, the other thing that we've noticed in the last year is our, God, I hate to say this, because this is gonna be so bad. Our meter maid, our lady that used to run the neighborhood all the time, they don't do that anymore. So, that used to catch a lot of those cars that were parking and give them tickets, and, and it made a big difference. But mo- most of the streets, I would say from Nineteenth, well, Nineteenth you can't park anywhere. I'd say from Twentieth to like Twenty-Fifth, somewhere around there, most of them have, have, have killed it during school days, from eight to five or nine to five.
So, you can't park on, on the first Twentieth through Twenty-Fifth?
Somewhere around there.
You can't park during school days?
I think somebody's saying on one side of the street.
You're not supposed to.
Not, well, I think he's saying on both sides of the street.
What?
Okay.
Oh, it's, it's two hour? I'm sorry, that seemed worse. I didn't know it was two hours. I thought you couldn't park there for that timeframe, but...
So, there...
Most, most of the students that do that and walk or get the bus and go over, because we have the bus that comes through there. Most of them are pretty prudent about going to class, come back, and get in and leave. But we've got some that just don't. But city bus has full routes through the unit neighborhood on, on Flint and Boston. They run to, to the campus.
So, some parking control, but not...
Very little.
And not enforced?
Not, not the way it was about a year ago or two years ago. I mean, it used to be, if somebody came to my house and they parked across the street, I'd say, you better be careful, because they're coming by and they'll get you.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry.
No, you're, you're good. Thank you.
I really want to tell you again, I appreciate so much what y'all do and your commitment. And y'all give a lot of time, and people don't understand it. I do, because I used to resource it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition at this time? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Richard Murphy. I live at twenty-nine eleven Twentieth Street. And this is more, and I hope this is not an appropriate and informational question about process. My understanding is that the sole decision before you tonight is whether or not to recommend a shift to the HDR zone for this particular set of lots. Certainly, I've been very impressed by, by the presentation regarding the site plans. But if I understand correctly, and I, I hope it's appropriate to ask, there'll be a, a set of approvals permitting that needs to happen, site development plans, et cetera, that will be internal to the city. But for tonight, the, the sole question is, is whether or not the HDR zone is going to happen to this, this area. Do I understand correctly?
That is correct.
And later on, there will be a series of approvals through administrative processes like site development plans, et cetera. Bearing in mind that perhaps the developers' plans may evolve, but in any event, those will be what are up for approval. Is that correct?
So, basically, what we're here today to do is to look at this, to see if it is fit for this, recommended to the city council. City council goes to it. City council's the one who has the final decision on it all. Once they do it for the zoning, then you'll have to get into all the other building safety and everything to do. So, alls we're doing is, is this property fit for this type of zoning?
For this type of zoning, as opposed to, say, this particular project as such?
Correct.
And then, just quickly, my vague understanding, parking is handled on a, a block-by-block basis, where, if I understand correctly, eighty percent of the people who live on a block can agree to some sort of limitation if certain payments are made. Thank you very much for your time and, and for all that you do.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in op-? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Abby Kleppa at twenty-six, twenty-seven, Twenty-first Street, so just the next block south. And I've lived there, right in that section there for twenty-four years. And so, I've watched a lot. I also am originally from Chicago. So, I know something about some of the things that come up with neighborhoods and how they've been mistreated. I do want to acknowledge that you have done a lot. I attended the meeting in the neighborhood a couple, two weeks ago, and there's... But I will say, I think that the problem is that there's too many people gonna be clustered in a neigh- at the edge of a neighborhood, and it will, it will change the neighborhood. Some of it could be for better, but what... And I know you don't decide this today based on the last comments, but to have a building that's, that's high with, I don't remember the exact numbers, five-hundred-ish, it's a lot better than seven-hundred from previously. But all of those students bring their friends to campus too. All of those cars have to go somewhere, and Tech already has a parking problem, and we get it. Twenty-first Street, it's two-hour parking. I don't know about in the twenty-five-hundred block, but in the twenty-six-hundred block, it's two-hour parking. It's been that way since I moved in, you know, twenty-four years ago. So, it works off and on to, to keep it, but, you know, it isn't a sure thing. And after-hours is actually when students get together, have their little fraternity and sorority gatherings at people's houses. And so, I would just say that usually, in my experience, it was appropriate for, if a neighborhood is going to be so clearly impacted and changed, that there ought to be some, you know, clear action that is, you know, for our sacrifice, because there are going to be sacrifices for those of us who live in these houses along these streets. There's gonna be more traffic. There's gonna be all the things that have been spoken about. And I would just hope that you would respect the normal, everyday people who live there, who maybe are connected to Tech, maybe aren't, maybe retired, maybe not. But that little section from Twentieth to Twenty-sixth is kind of the stepchild of the neighborhood in that it's got lots of small houses and lots, and they aren't as big houses. And it's, and there've been a lot of rent houses for many years. They're being upgraded in various ways. But I would just hope that you would remember that there are people who live in these and that they are your neighbors and fellow citizens and not just people to be pushed aside so that something can be there just to be there. And I think it's a, a better project, but maybe there should, maybe it should be just one, one story less. I don't know whether that changes the high-density thing, but it certainly would change having so many cars and so many people and so many students. We all love them, but there, there are a lot of people. They have lots of friends and socializing and so on. So, thank you.
Thank you. If it pleases the commission, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. My name is Don Richards. I live at thirty-one oh-five Twentieth Street. I live right across the street from Mr. Prather. I appreciate the opportunity you've given us to come and address this and appreciate the job you have before you. But I'm here to oppose the zoning change. This, this plan is clearly a better plan than it was two years ago. But we feel like it's still the wrong type of facility to locate in such a critical spot for the neighborhood. We're gonna take nearly six hundred students and locate them at a one-half-block area at a very critical spot to the neighborhood. I want to address, and you've heard them, but the three problems, the parking problem, the traffic problem, and the infrastructure problem for this building at this location. It's gonna be a heavy use on all three of those. The parking problem, I have to disagree with Mr. Per Mueller, and I think he has cited out of context, even the form that he's provided, the charts, they're gonna have, he keeps citing it, parking by the unit. And actually, there's twice as many beds as there are units. And like, it's been mentioned here in West Texas, everybody that lives here has a car. Ninety-five percent of them will have a car or vehicle. Most of the guys have pickup trucks. I drive a pickup truck, I'm typical West Texan. But it's gonna have, you're gonna have, actually, it shows it to be about a half a parking space per vehicle for these nearly six hundred students that are going over here. You have to look at it on a per-bed basis, not a per-unit basis. We think per-unit is very misleading, because you stack right across the street, next to Mr. Prather, and we're right across the street from where I live. I'm the side that has all the parking on it. We have a, a young man, his family bought the house there, a young man that goes to Tech. And four students live there together, and there are four giant elevated up pickup trucks that park there. Just a week ago, when we had the last playoff game, every football weekend prior to that, last weekend, I had twelve pickup trucks in front of my house over in the parking house. Right in the immediate, probably a hundred feet of that house, we had twelve pickup trucks there parked. A little partying goes on. We had to, Mr. Prather and I, and Ms. Prather and my wife, we're able to handle the students. We like Tech students. We love them. We've all been students. We can handle them one-on-one, and we've had to go over and address a couple of issues. We still thank Mrs. Prather for making the group over there hand out Halloween candy to all the kids that come through. She went over and chewed them out and told them they need to be participating in the neighborhood. We can handle them in the neighborhood. I moved into this neighborhood forty-five years ago, nineteen eighty. I moved back here from working in Washington, DC for then Congressman Ken Hance. I've been living in the neighborhood ever since. I, so it's forty-five years I've been here. I've always had a property that had a rent, the first one I bought had a rent house on it. I've rented the whole time. I've never rented to a student, never really had one come and apply. I think there's a ton of people that live over there that rent, were accused of having a high rental rate. But a lot of people come over there to go to school. They go to Roscoe Wilson, that award-winning school. They come over there. We've got lots of, if I rented, it would be to a law student or a med student, because they don't party too much. But we also got a lot of professors that live over there, visiting professors, and a lot of people that work for the university that live over in that neighborhood. We're gonna take nearly six hundred students in a half-block area and locate them there. And so, we've got a parking problem. Number one, they've got about a half a parking space for that, for each bed. That's not enough. It's not even near enough. Secondly, they're gonna, they've told us they're gonna charge for parking. That's gonna cut back in the number of people who take parking spaces, because they're gonna charge for that. There's no place for them to park but Twentieth Street. That's where a lot of them are gonna park. Or they'll park in the parking lots of the two buildings on either side. They're gonna park there. We have a lot of students that come over in our neighborhood on weekends. We enjoy them. We enjoy where we live. We enjoy hearing the Tech band warm up. We enjoy hearing the victory bells ring. It's a great neighborhood. We enjoy all the things we do, the Christmas tour. We enjoy the Halloween, where everybody in town comes to Tech Terrace. Traffic can be a problem, especially on Twentieth Street. I agree wholly with Mr. I agree wholly with Mr. Prather about, when they leave, they're going to come out and come down Twentieth Street. Some of them will go all the way to Indiana before they head out. Traffic is a problem, and the parking is going to help create that problem, because we've got a shortage of parking, we believe. It was shown to you that on this parking lot on the south side, and they've got a parking lot there, and there's a parking lot there now, and they're going to create it, but they're going to create a fire exit there, and nobody can use that. You know, but it's a surface parking lot, but you know, when I went to Texas Tech several years ago, even more than forty-five years ago, I lived in one of the high-rise dorms, and we had the old emergency fire escapes that we'd not use except in the case of fires. We lived on those. Every student, at least in the men's dorms, we go and use that fire escape all the time. Students are not going to pay any attention to the fact that you don't use it in case of a fire. I have a little difficulty conceptually why we need a fire escape to a open-surface parking lot. Looks like they could all go out one parking lot, but that parking lot, students, within a year, students will figure out a way to get in and out of that parking lot and go on Twentieth Street, which is one of the problems we are all concerned about. So the parking and the traffic that it's going to create through the neighborhoods are two of the biggest issues we have. A lot of kids in that neighborhood, and a lot of kids attend Roscoe Wilson, and just a couple of blocks more over is where I live, is where Roscoe Wilson is, and that's a huge area, and we have a ton of people coming there that pick up their kids, drop them off, and pick them up. So we're going to blend in, we think, more in excess of five-hundred vehicles if this facility is placed there. Again, I'm not complaining necessarily about the facility or the design of it at this stage, but it's the wrong facility to put in this location. Let me also quickly address the infrastructure. We're going to take five hundred people on a half-block area right at the cornerstone point for the neighborhood. We already have a little issues with sewer and water, especially water pressure, and they're going to put them right over there between us, we think, and the main water lines. Who's going to pay for that infrastructure? Well, they'll pay for the ones on their property, but they're going to be hooking it up to that, and so that's going to create, we think, those type of problems in the neighborhood, all the infrastructure over there, especially the water and sewer. You know, we, again, we can handle the students one-on-one, and we do. We address it, and we do, because we love the neighborhood so much. But this may be a good plan, a good design, but it's in the wrong location, especially for this neighborhood. For the protection of the neighborhood, we would encourage you to not approve this zoning. Thank you very much for your time.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? If you please give your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Connie Seymour. I live at twenty-six, twenty-five, twentieth, which is exactly right across the street from what you're talking about. And I don't want to be redundant, but there's all this construction on Nineteenth Street right now. When do you plan on breaking ground, and is it going to coincide with all that construction? That's something. Then while they're constructing it, all the dump trucks and all the heavy equipment that needs to be brought in, what's that going to do to Twentieth Street? That's a brick street, not a very well-kept brick street, but it is. The parking, that's not going to get any better. You've heard what everybody said about the parking, and the trash, and the infrastructure. I live right across the street and have for forty years. I get to listen to the bells. You put a high-rise there, I won't hear the bells, I won't hear the band practice, and that's something I really like to do. I really wish that you would think it's a nicer design than what you came up with a couple of years ago, and it's a good presentation, but it doesn't belong in that spot. You can't, I, I don't know what you can put there, but you can't put that. There's not enough parking, there's too many kids, like he said, you know, you've got two beds in your unit, so that's two cars, or should I say, two trucks? Because night, a lot of women out there drive trucks, too, and when they leave home, they wanted to bring their truck with them. I see them race down my street all the time. I just had one of the feral cats that I kind of take care of, he got killed the other day because somebody's driving sixty miles an hour down Twentieth Street just to get two blocks. I mean, it really, I'm sorry, but it's, it's not going to work. It's, it's the wrong place. So thanks for listening to me again, and I'll be back. Until you get the right place, I realize you really do need to put something there, but a dormitory is not going to work. Those kids are going to cross Nineteenth Street, they're not going to go to the light. Even when they go to the light, they're still in danger because of traffic. So that's what I have to offer.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
My name is Sid Seidman. I live at thirty-two oh-two Twentieth Street. And real quick, just wanted to point out that basically, they're asking for a zoning change, and that change is kind of like you're the Supreme Court. It's up to you to decide whether or not that change, or that change in our law is appropriate, that it's necessary, because you're changing something that was put into place for a very good reason in the first place. This is a residential neighborhood. Our neighborhood has, was built and geographically can handle what it's got, which is two schools, two parks, and to be an anchor for Texas Tech University. I don't know that our neighborhood can, our parks can absorb three to five hundred more students on a weekend. I don't know that our parents can drive through the traffic that's going to happen when the students at a complex as large with very limited parking are going to avoid being around their own area to the extent they can by driving out into the neighborhood to get to, to get to Indiana, or to get to Flint, to where they can go any direction they want to. That is a problem I truly perceive as being greatly detrimental to our neighborhood, not enhancing it at all, and may very likely cause a great number of people to decide not to attend our magnet schools, JT Hutchinson and Roscoe Wilson, because they can't be bothered to go to the trouble that this traffic will very likely cause. We're one square mile, we're not two square miles. That's not a very big place to put a large multifamily unit that's being proposed today. Please seriously consider whether or not this zoning change is appropriate, because it is, in my opinion, a change in law. I bought my house living in a single-family neighborhood. As you encroach away from that single-family division and make it so high that you can put a seven, eight, twelve-story apartment there with no limitation, even though I'm sure they don't plan to do that, they make extremely receptive, it could happen. Those, those plans could change at will as all of the variances and such go forth after a decision is made, if it's made in their favor. So please, if you don't do anything else, please consider that it's not necessarily your role to, to have development if it's not appropriate. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next?
Hi there. Cheryl Gonzalez, thirty-two oh-seven Twentieth Street. Thank you all for listening to all of us in the neighborhood, or the hood, is what we like to call it. It is much better, by the way, from two years ago. It's still just the same problem, it's just too many in a small spot. And I'm also very concerned about going to HDR. I'm hoping that y'all will actually stick to only five stories, but once it goes to HDR, they really, literally can do whatever they want. They're not held by any rules at all, just by their, hopefully, word promises. And then I do have a question, and maybe whenever they get back up to do their, you know, prose, about the alley. They mentioned that they're going to widen some of it, and the trash pickup is going to be private, and so I'm guessing that they're going to come through Nineteenth Street, through the parking garage to pick up the trash, because if they're going to use the alley, they'll have to widen the whole alley. There's just, it is very narrow. Once that happens, there's people who have apartment buildings, and their houses are actually all the way up to the edge of the alley. Are we going to get to that point where somebody has to say imminent domain for those people's properties so they can have a wider alley for the trash? So if they could answer that whenever they get a chance, I'd appreciate it. Thank you all so much for your time.
Anyone else wishing, yes, or let them finish, and we'll come back and get you. They're recording. Thank you.
My name is Todd Kreidler. I live at three thousand eight twenty-sixth Street. Good to see a lot of y'all again. Thank you for all of y'all's hard work. As you probably know, having driven through Tech Terrace, how many have you driven through lately? All of us do periodically, pick up kids, pick up some groceries, do odds and ends. You know, it's one of the most eclectic neighborhoods in Lubbock. It really is. Is there a standard architecture in Tech Terrace? Not really. I know we're talking about trying to do a complimentary architectural design here in the structure, and I have to admit, it's a hell of a lot better than it was the last time around, if I can use my, my French adjective there. It's an homage, certainly, to the Spanish Renaissance, and the arcade effects on the front are nice. It gives echo to the actual, real arcades that are on the Tech buildings, which come at an extraordinary expense, and of course, were designed as a cooling feature. Oh, well, I'll just, I digress, I'm an educator by trade. But I don't want to beat this too much. We've talked a lot about the traffic, and I think, over the last two years and during the time I came up to speak at that point, I think I mentioned the, the press of traffic and parking. It's already there in Tech Terrace. My good neighbors, Lauren and Sharon Prather, and Don Richards and others, they are already community advocates. They are doing things because, for various reasons, budgetary cutbacks, the, the little patrol lady doesn't come by anymore. So I know others besides them that actually say, hey, by the way, this is a no-parking sign on this, you might park over here. Oh, okay, and usually, everything comes out well. And so, all of us being good neighbors, good advocates are out there. We're in the trenches. I've done that occasionally, you know, just trying to, you know, let people know that there are certain protocols. You know, a lot of kids, you know, that live in the neighborhood, and being a very eclectic neighborhood with students and teachers and people of diversity and all backgrounds, I mean, it's pretty, pretty doggone neat. And then where else can you go? My wife says I should walk to Plaza, but I drive my truck anyway, and park down there with all the other trucks that are struggling to get in at the various great places. So it's a wonderful environment. But I really hope you think hard and look at the numbers of parking. I know what the requirements are, and we know what the requirements are, but we know what the pressures will be. And really serious consider that, and working with that a bit to help us out, at least at that small level. There's some other issues, you know, traffic calming, not all of us agree on what to do about traffic calming. For a while, I didn't tell my wife this, I did walk to work when she was teaching elsewhere, and now you know. She's going to ask me why I don't do that more often. Well, I'd get to the crosswalk, and I'm, I'm a slow kid from Burke Burnett originally, who decided to go high and get up above three thousand feet where it wasn't so doggone muggy. But when I got to the intersection, I said, I'll get the light to cross on the crosswalk, but I got cars trying to turn and kill me from behind, I'll have cars that will want to turn and kill me from that way, and then I'll have the ones that may not see the red light and kill me as I hit the crosswalk. So I cut, I'm coming from four different directions. So even when I rode my bike, I would go up the back streets, cut past the Prather's house, and then jaywalk across Nineteenth, because I figured at least I was in control of my own destiny. Now, I may not be the only one that does that, and I, probably out of five hundred and fifty and six hundred people, there are going to be a few others, kids that says, boy, there's a bottleneck here, and Boston is already, Boston and Nineteenth is already a tough place to cross. I might find another place to jaywalk. Think about those things, real-world stuff. The structure looks better, it's not perfect, it's not ideally suited for a neighborhood like ours, but hey, we can work with things, but really take a look at some of these real-world issues, if you would, please, and help us out, being good neighbors to people who want to live in the neighborhood. Thank you so much. Y'all do a good job.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I live at three thousand eight twenty-sixth Street in Tech Terrace neighborhood, and I'm very appreciative of your stamina, because we were all here two years ago to protest also a, a high-density housing complex. This one is beautiful. I am a, have an art background, but it is not appropriate because of the density of students who will live there for this particular spot in the neighborhood. Texas Tech University, as some of you may know, has the largest contiguous land university in the United States. And the question I would ask is maybe Tech would be interested in having this plan for one of its student residence halls, and I do understand there are two on the planning board. That said, you cannot put that many people in one spot on this northern boundary of the neighborhood. I can tell you, in answer to the parking issues, I live on a street where the neighbors got together on the three-thousand block of Twenty-sixth Street, and we implemented restricted no-parking, residents only, and we all agreed not to park there as residents, because we were concerned about the traffic congestion of the parents who drive east and west to take their kids to Roscoe Wilson and to the park. And we knew that, that nobody would be able to see little children behind all those parked cars. So we did that in order to ensure the safety of our Roscoe Wilson students. Nobody parks there. Now you may say, well, if we put this there and the student resident guests are parking on the neighborhood, we have parking control. I am here to tell you, where is our LPD officer? This gentleman has better things to do than to come and issue parking citations. And we attended the Lubbock East Patrol Division meeting to meet our new chief, and we work very closely with officers in our area, because we have a park across the street. They have to necessarily triage their calls. If they have a nine-one-one call, if they have a robbery, if they have any kind of homicide, they have to keep dropping those parking complaints to the bottom of the list. We had an officer show up, bless his heart, at three o'clock in the morning, because that's how long it took for him to finally get to our complaint of a parking infraction on our street. So the, the police aren't going to be able to help any of those neighbors in the surrounding area by this building when the residents have their friends over for all kinds of activities that we know, having been students ourselves, which is why I'm wearing red and black, because I was a Tech student, we know that they, they want to have their friends together. And I have small minutia issues. I ran swimming pools and was a lifeguard and a pool director at Reese Air Force Base for a total accumulation of five years. You can put up all the signs you want around a pool, but you have to have a monitor at that pool to keep it safe. The other question I have is the terrace that is proposed for this building. I lived at ULOFs for over fifteen years. I was an RA there. We had children, student children, pushing their furniture out the windows, because they wanted to see how big a splat it made. And unbeknownst to most people in Lubbock, there was a suicide on the seventh story of that building. So I'm a little concerned about the fact that this is a private building. Yes, they have said that they will have security, but knowing students as I do, because I was a TA at Tech for over ten years, I was a professor at UT Austin for over eight years, and students are not always acting in their own self-interest. So to pack in this many students in this one area of our neighborhood will definitely create safety issues, parking issues, but above all, the one word I haven't heard here is scale. I heard- I heard human scale on the architectural drawing. But how is a five-story building in human scale? This building is out of scale with all the other buildings in the neighborhood. I would love to see it maybe at three stories. That might work. But it's a monolith. And I would really hate to be the neighbors who have to live behind it. And I will close by citing the golden rule. Would you want this building next door to your house? And I thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Good evening. I'll be short. My name is Baynetta Jordan, and I live at, pardon me, 3009 21st Street. I own the house that's directly across the street from the fire exit. What concerns me, and I appreciate the new drawing and the attention that they are trying to give to the neighborhood. He did mention that these kids, when they leave, will walk down to the bus stop and go across to Tech, or they'll ride the bus. They won't ride the bus from there. They don't ride the bus down to the Depot District. They ride the bus around the neighborhood. And the bus picks up kids all along Flint and goes around. And it's a wonderful service. But the kids that are going to buy, live in this complex will use their vehicles as soon as they get out of class. Friday nights, they'll figure a way out of that fire exit. And 20th Street in front of my rent house that's there is already crowded. This parking lot is not crowded at the moment. It's not full at the moment. And there's still people lined up and down every morning to walk across to Tech. So I'm opposed to it because the fire exit will be broken. We all know that. They'll find a way out. And Friday afternoon, all those cars that are there will go to the Depot District. So I'm opposed to that for that reason. My other reason I'm opposed to it is, as he mentioned earlier, the life of these projects is about 10 years. So what's going to happen in 10 years when this isn't the newest, coolest building? And we in the neighborhood will suffer the consequences of what happens when this gets sold to whomever. And we have no control over it. So I thank you, and I ask you not to grant the zone change. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Terry Siz. I live on 2619 19th Street. We owned apartment building there. I hear everybody talking about parking. I hear everybody talking about how many students per building, per room. I heard this gentleman say he got in touch with the Tech Terrace. Well, no one ever got in touch with me. I lived there for 30 something years. My family has owned that for over 50 years. And to say that we don't say anything about the alleyways. You go down there, you don't have to drive. You can stand there and watch them zooming down the alleys. Not only the students, you got your FedEx, you got your UPS, you got the delivery for the cafe. They zoom through there. But do we hear anything about that? No. Do we hear about the diversity? We're not just talking West Texas students. My people come from Iran, Turkey, Germany, China. They all have cars. They all have friends. They even have churches they go to, and they come to see them there. Back of our building is always full. Because why? We tell them to park in the back. And we still, for a small unit such as us, still have to monitor it because students will be students. So when you talk about humanities of what's going to happen, they still jaywalk. Matter of fact, wasn't it two weeks ago, there was an accident on 19th and University? How many of students jaywalk? You've all been students. Don't tell me we can't sit there and cast a stone and say we're all perfect. We've all done something that we're not proud of. So when you take that into consideration, why are they wanting to do this now? We keep turning it down almost every two years. I'm not a scholar person. I'm an average Joe. But I do know one thing. You keep repeatedly repeating the same thing over and over, expecting a different change. That's a sign of insanity. Because we keep turning it down. And we will continue to turn it down because you represent us. And we've lived there for so much time of our lives that you have to consider, we are not going to let some outsiders build and develop and leave it. Isn't that what happened to Park Tower? Look at it now. How many more buildings? How many more structures? And you all talk about wanting to make Lubbock beautiful. That won't do it. What it will do is create more problems. You have the homeless that walk through that alley. You have burglaries that occur. Even with the fence, anybody can get over it. Even me with a bad hip, if I can slide through it, I'll get to it. So take those things into consideration and let's stop the insanity. If someone didn't make a profit from it, why should we have to pay for it? And we're the ones that built it. We're the ones that went through all these procedures, you call. Because we do not want something that's going to deteriorate our neighborhood. So please take into consideration the fact that we're all human. We don't need this no more. And it's constantly being repetitively done. That's not going to make it any better. Stop it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Good evening. My name is Ted Hogan, 2712 20th Street. I live approximately even with Mr. Gray's head. We're about 100 yards to the west of Boston Avenue. So we're directly impacted by this. I had not intended to speak tonight, frankly, because I'm very impressed with the application. Mostly because it is so much better than the last application. However, a couple of things have been brought up tonight that have led me to change my mind slightly. I wasn't necessarily in favor of it, but I wasn't necessarily opposed till a couple of things dawned on me. My understanding, and the first is, I need some clarification from the applicant. Because my understanding was that next week, they bragged ground on a project in College Station. And if I understood the gentleman to say what he said correctly, I believe what he said is, if that project works, then this is the next project. I may have misheard him. That creates a problem, though. And that leads to the second point. The second point, and I think the real issue for determination tonight, is whether HDR is appropriate zoning in this place. This is a nice-looking project, much better than the last project. However, HDR does not work in this location. And the reason is Pinecrest cannot be tied to this plan or to any other plan or develop anything at all. If, in fact, Pinecrest chose not to develop this site, HDR still remains in place. And another developer could come in and build something entirely differently. That changes the equation, folks. You cannot vote simply on this application. You have to consider the usage under HDR. And that is a problem with the UDC that was adopted. That's a problem with our code, not with this application. Because of that, because of the edicts from Austin that do not allow this board or the council to tie this application to a site plan, as Ms. Gonzalez and Mr. Murphy told you, they can build virtually anything they like. The problem is not what Pinecrest is developing. The problem is HDR. And it's with our Uniform Development Code. And for that reason, and for that reason alone, I'd urge you to vote no tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan.
Mr. Chairman, honorable members of the commission, I am Roger Settler, a lifelong resident of Broadway. I currently am at 2120 Broadway. I'm here to represent the Congress of Neighborhood Associations and Historic Overton Neighborhood Association, who have voted unanimously with our friends and neighbors in Tech Terrace to oppose this project. For decades, the Congress and the various neighborhood associations in Overton have fought the good fight of sustainability for neighborhoods versus its polar opposite, which is artificial subsidized growth promoted by developers in real estate interest. And I think we have to remember the words of Donald Trump when he said, "Part of winning is knowing when enough is enough." And enlightened city leadership in Lubbock simply must take a look at what's going on with sustainability versus growth. Charles Dickens once wrote, "At times call for a proper reflection." Well, a proper reflection is, how many people can we cram into Lubbock? I know there are folks in the real estate community who yearn for the time or the day they dream of that Lubbock will be a city of 500,000 people. That is not sustainable. That is not realistic. We do not have the water. We will never have the water to sustain that type of population. So at some point, we're going to have to say, you know, folks live in West Texas because they enjoy the open spaces. They don't want to be New York, Chicago, LA, Dallas, Houston. If they did, they would live there. But we live in West Texas because we treasure our lack of density. And instead, our city leaders for many years have promoted density. I helped organize the Overton North Neighborhood Association back in the 90s. And I remember the promises that Delbert McDougall, the developer, made to that neighborhood that he would work with the single-family owners of the area and improve their properties. I remember the angry meeting when 100 people came out and realized they had been betrayed, that they were going to be plowed under. And now those same interests have announced it is their intention to plow under Historic Overton and make it into Overton North. Now, folks, I can tell you, living on Broadway, I get a chance to view firsthand the density of Overton North. Don't walk down the alley behind my house when students are hurling huge garbage sacks off the third floor like they did in medieval Europe. God help you if one of those sacks would hit you in the head. That's the sort of thing that's going on. And it's amazing, in 10 years, to witness the deterioration that has gone on in Overton North. Frankly, ladies and gentlemen, we have a potential slum over there. A slum created by too much density, packing too many people into a small area. Now, I've heard people praise this project. And from my point of view, I don't care whether it's a better project than the last one or not. The fact is, you're taking a half-block area and cramming almost 600 students into that area. I heard during a presentation at the Tech Terrace Neighborhood Association, the false premise that, oh, we're going to take the notion that 50% of students have cars. Well, I guarantee you that virtually 100% of the students have a car or pickup. And some of them have two. They'll have a car and a pickup. I'm in a fraternity that has 150 members. Every single one of those 150 have a car or truck. 15 of them have two. Now, you take an area like this and you have 600 people and only 250 or some odd parking spaces, that is a recipe for disaster. An example of high density that will not work. It is not appropriate for the area. It should not, and no matter how pretty the current concept is, it is inappropriate for the Tech Terrace neighborhood. Now, one needs only to go down to the Ken Abraham project that's currently going on in Overton South if you want to see the effects that construction can have on a neighborhood. Overton South has been basically torn apart. Avenue X is virtually closed by all the heavy construction equipment down there. Now, I understand the city leadership wants to tear up Broadway between Avenue Q and the park. On the one hand, it's an interesting dichotomy, a juxtaposition. They want businesses to come downtown. Then they're going to tear up a street and make it impossible for those businesses to survive. Recently, a number of businesses have gone out on 19th Street because of the construction there. And now we're talking about putting a gigantic project with all kinds of construction in a very dense area of traffic around 19th and University. It is simply unrealistic. A proper reflection by enlightened leadership would, will realize that this is inappropriate. So I would urge you to just say no to this development and any other development of this type at this site. It will not work, and you should say no.
Thank you, Mr. Settler. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll ask for anyone wishing to speak in favor. Mr. Dillon, you want to answer some of the questions, I guess?
Yes. So in answer to the trash question, there is going to be an interior trash compactor for the residents. It will be inside the parking garage. It will be accessed by the parking garage for collection. The increase in the alley paving is going to be adjacent to the south side of this property to increase it wide enough for fire needs. We've got to have a 26-foot lane adjacent to the backside of this. And so we'll increase the concrete necessary for that need along the south side of the building. Just to clarify a few things on the zoning, most of this property, the west half of this, is already high-density residential. The east side of it is heavy commercial. So it's a downzone from the heavy commercial. The heavy commercial requires, if we were to leave a heavy commercial, we would have had to have had a larger buffer between the east side of the building and the hotel. And so that's one of the reasons that we're downzoning from the heavy commercial to the high-density residential, which is what the rest of the property is zoned. There's a small sliver that you would see on the north side of that alley that, that alley wasn't originally there. It was dedicated later on, and it cut through at an angle. And so there's a small sliver there that separated the residential lots to the south. And so we're just cleaning up a five-foot little sliver on the south side just so that if they ever do an out-to-survey, they can show that, you know, it's all high-density residential. So just a couple of clarifying points there to clear up some of that. Maybe that might answer some questions. With that, I'd be happy to answer any more.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak at this time? If not, we'll close the public hearing. For a matter of discussion, we...
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Eric Lampert, 3802 133rd. Excuse the nerves. I came out here in '03 for Tech from a border state that I don't like to claim. I'm happily a Texan now. I love it here. Lubbock is great. I've got three little ones and a beautiful wife, and I love Texas. We thought about moving to the big city to have some grandparents around. My wife's family's in Dallas. But I love West Texas. The people here are great. A lot of the people in this room are the reason why. I just, I appreciate all of these people in this room, whether we're on the same side or not. Because they've built this city. They've done a lot of great things. They fought passionately for it. And they've made it a home that I'm proud of and that I want to raise kids in. And I hope that they stay around. Or at least if they go to another university, they come back. But, you know, we're all here talking, in my opinion, about stewardship. Some people my age, not a lot of them in the room. A lot of you are about my age, are the people who are going to be tasked with the next phase of this city. And unfortunately, not a lot of them are here. A lot of my friends are kind of scared to come and talk and whatnot. But... But this project, I remember this specific property from very first time I got here, and I always loved the property. I was involved with starting this project, I guess you could say. And we looked at a lot of uses of what it could be. And obviously, because of land costs and everything, there's not a lot of options and size, and so it dictated a few options. But I just want to tip my hat to all the hours, some of y'all in this room, definitely all of these people in this room, have tried to make it a better project, because I do agree that it's much better than it ever was before. So I have a quick question. Excuse my ignorance, but currently, it's heavy commercial? Or part of it? Okay. So currently, under heavy commercial, I just pulled up the UDC on my phone, because I don't really know. But it notes a bunch of permitted uses. So currently, as it sits, all these uses could be permitted without going through this process? Is that correct? Okay, so just out of curiosity, do we think a car wash is more appropriate? Maybe, maybe not. Auto vehicle, parts store, a, excuse me, outdoor shooting range or archery range, a motel, smoke shop. I personally don't like the looks of those places. Micro manufacturing, industrial and manufacturing product sales. Some of these things, I don't know exactly what it means. A helipad, that would be interesting. I don't know. I just wanted to say, from my point of view, I think we're trying to move in the right direction. I support the project. I would like something to happen. I think it's gotten better, again, with countless hours of y'all, your predecessors before you, all these people. And I hope we can get somewhere to do something with the property, because in my opinion, right now, it's an eyesore. And, you know, I've gone and traveled around a lot of cities with universities like ours, and this is a common thing, large buildings next to a university. I hope we can figure out a way to marry it well with the neighborhood. And I just, again, want to tip my hat to Tyler and his team and how they've really tried to do that. Hope we can move forward and figure out something good for this neighborhood. Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Okay, one last time, anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this project? Okay, don't see any, so we will close the public hearing. From out of discussions, do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
We have a motion by Mr. Goina and a second by Mr. Woods.
Mr. Chair, if you would indulge me for just one moment before y'all just start your discussion.
Yes, ma'am.
There's been a lot of great discussion and things that you've seen and heard tonight. I want to try to help y'all focus the discussion and, for the sake of time, help everybody identify there is one issue before you. This is just like every one of your zone cases, the single issue and question is, is HDR an appropriate land use in this location considering surrounding land uses? So I know that we have a lot of great additional information, but that's the question before you.
Yes, ma'am. Got that. Appreciate it, because I know, looking at it going just on 19th, what I was looking at, there's...
Yeah, in the spirit of that conversation, can we pull up the current zoning map? Sorry to interrupt.
No, that's okay. I was going to say, there's 15 lots on 19th, and all but three are HDR in present, and two of them are what they're wishing to change right now. I think you'll see it when you get to...
There you go.
I guess you say four, because you've got the little Tim Cole memorial on the end.
So I'll start. I just wanted to bring up a few points. Parking seemed to be a huge topic of conversation tonight and has been every time this comes. I have made a personal observation over the last couple of years, because I've wondered, you know, about this very topic. And so I've driven through North Overton, as Mr. Settler brought up earlier, just during the day, various times of the day, when games are going on and when they're not. The traffic, if you just drive through a street in North Overton, does not seem to be overbearing to me. I mean, when there's a tech football game going on, yeah, there's a bunch of traffic. But outside of that, there's really not a whole lot of traffic going on. And the density of North Overton is way more than this. Like, you have tons of these buildings. So from that perspective, parking, traffic, I said parking, but really, it's traffic. But also parking, I mean, there's not a whole lot of issues with parking that seem to me from my personal observations. The next thing I wanted to bring up was just the fact that, like, as we come to this case each time, and I say this with all due respect to the neighborhood and to fellow citizens, like, every time, it's like, well, this is a great project, but if you just did this, if you made it less burdensome in this way, then we could do it. And in my opinion, I just don't think there's ever going to be a time where it gets to, this is a good project. It's just, there's always going to be another ask. And finally, as James brought up initially, like, if you look at this right in front of you, the neighbors to this property could go and build this right now, in theory, and maybe even something more onerous if they were able to do it. I mean, this isn't like a podium, high-rise project. This is, it is consistent with the surrounding, the two properties right next door to it. So in my opinion, this is a great project. I like it. I voted in favor of the last two, it's no secret, and this is way less onerous. So I'm in favor.
Christian, I'd like to go back in one question. Everybody goes and talks about the parking. Is, somebody questioned the numbers of whether it is. Are their numbers in line with what's currently in the UDC for HDR?
Yes. For a vertical mixed-use project, it is half a parking space per dwelling unit.
Okay. Not for bed, but for dwelling unit?
Dwelling unit.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that, because you had the questions going back and forth.
And unlike Tanner, I voted against the last two. I'm openly honest about that. But I will say, I just commend you for the work you're doing to work with Tech Terrace Neighborhood to get this to where it fits the neighborhood. I do think you are a lot closer than we've ever been. So thank you for that time. I never thought I would say the words, but I actually support this. I think that this is a great project. I think it's going to fit that neighborhood a lot better than what we've seen before. So congratulations. You fought a hard task.
Well, you know, I've had kids, I had kids that went to school in these neighborhoods. And so I've driven these streets, and traffic has been bad for 15, 20 years. And, you know, if you want to improve the traffic in your neighborhood, you get rid of the schools, because that's the biggest problem. Or get rid of Texas Tech, because it doesn't matter what you do, those two things are going to cause traffic problems in your neighborhood. And because Texas Tech's there, that's going to cause traffic problems in your neighborhood. As far as the rest of it goes, I mean, it's actually down zoning a piece of property. So it's limiting the uses that it could be. I mean, I don't think any of you want a car wash in that neighborhood. I mean, you know, talk about traffic, that's traffic. There's a ton of other uses that could happen on this property currently that I don't think you'd want in your neighborhood. And then the other half of it is, even if you change the zoning on it to something else, you're not going to be able to... This piece of property is so expensive, this is the kind of project you're going to have to put on it to make the numbers work. You know, you're not going to change the zoning and put a car wash on it, because it just won't cash flow. You can't put an auto zone there. You can't put, well, maybe a smoke shop, but I don't know. But I mean, I'm sure you don't want one of those wildly painted smoke shops with all the lights on it. I can't find, regardless of this project, this zoning, zoning for this space is right and correct, because it's the only, it's the best and only use for this piece of property. And if you don't put this project on it or another project on it, I mean, eventually, it's going to be exactly what this is. And so I just don't see, I don't see another option, especially when the entire rest of the block is high-density residential.
So this is my third P&amp;Z meeting. And so trial by fire here, but I've kept up with this case and this land use. And, you know, what I'm seeing today is the developer and the applicant really trying to work with the neighborhood and trying to put their best foot forward, making some things different, trying to be attentive to what your needs are and concerns are. And I'm confident that this is a, going to be a pretty darn good project for this site, especially compared to the previous proposed projects. I think that currently, the parking lot that's on 20th Street is wide open. And at least, this project is proposing to put in a fire access gate, which will have a Knox box, and limiting that traffic onto 20th Street. I think that's a step in the right direction. That's pretty meaningful. Secondly, the applicant will have to go through a traffic analysis. They're going to go through the city's requirements to study the traffic impacts on this area and design the site accordingly. And so I don't foresee how this specific use substantially increases the overall impact of traffic upon 20th Street specifically. I do foresee 19th Street being impacted pretty heavily. And that's going to be a tech-stocked street, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Doolan, or is that under city purview there?
Being given to the city.
Gotcha.
The widest arterial network.
Well, thank goodness. Lastly, I know any good developer is not going to underpark a project. That's a really good way to tanker pro forma, is when you don't have enough parking for your tenants. And so while I couldn't agree more, I think it was Mr. Hogan that was up here talking about the UDC, if I got your name correct, and the inadequacy of half a parking spot per unit does seem a little inadequate, it seems like. But I think this applicant has taken that into consideration and is heavily exceeding that to try to prevent that. And so therefore, this feels and looks conforming with the surrounding uses around it.
I'm in favor. I like this as well. Just looking at it makes me want to go back to tech, just live there.
No alcohol, it's cool.
It's all right. I'll go to the bars. If I saw the first two or three that came in before this with the 700 units, that was maybe a little bit aggressive. With this, it's not too aggressive, and at the same time, Lubbock in general is growing, and Texas Tech is growing. So we are definitely going to need to provide more beds to the students that are coming in. And amenities like this encourage students to come in to tech also. It's very close to the two schools, so you can cross 19th and get there. As far as the infrastructure that was brought up, water pressure is also something that engineering takes care of. It's not that they're just going to put 500 beds there and water is not going to come out of the faucet like at the resident on the south side of that. All that is taken into consideration. Even the number of parking spots for projects like this is not out of the blue. The number of a parking spot per, or half a parking spot per unit is not something that the city just threw out there in the UDC. It's been studied, and that's how it works. So in general, I do like the project.
I would like to ask, are we taking into consideration just the residents when it comes to the parking and things like that? Because, again, it's not just the residents that are going to be at this location. We're already looking at, which I asked a minute ago, about the cafe and how there's going to be public coming in and actually frequenting this cafe possibly. Non-parking spots and guests. He didn't mention guests, and I was going to ask, is there going to be a guest parking lot? Also, it was mentioned a little bit earlier to take into consideration that those parking spots that are going to be available are going to be paid. You have to pay for them. Are we taking that into consideration as well? There's also another concern that I have is one entry in and one entry out onto 19th Street. Nobody has brought that up, and I was just going to ask that question as well. There's going to be a lot of traffic in one spot when you have all of that traffic going into one entry in and one entry out. Am I correct? And has that been considered? And then we're also talking about the likelihood, which I have to speak to what I've experienced, that is a 10-lane street. Am I correct? Am I correct? That's 10 lanes?
It's apparently the widest thoroughfare in the city of Lubbock, I learned tonight.
Okay. Now, we have 500 students in one entity. Do you think 500 students are going to go to one, you know, on Boston or on Indiana, wait for that light, those types of things? I think we're, also, for me, I'm concerned, because I've almost hit somebody on 19th Street crossing the street to get to class. So I'm thinking that may increase that with 500 students running late for class, trying to get there on scooters, on bikes. Those types of things are my concerns. So I have to say, the biggest one is the one entry in and one entry out, for me. So has anybody thought about that?
A lot of the Texas Tech parking garages only have one entry anyway, and there's just as many cars to park. In the stacked parking, at Ritter Park, there's one entry, one exit.
But they're on a smaller street. They're talking about one entry in and one entry out on a five-lane street.
The fact that the gate, like, to get into the parking spot is so far into the garage, they won't be, like, waiting on 19th Street to get in. They'll be inside the garage already and then going to the second and third floor. It's not going to back up too much on 19th.
But you only have non-parking spaces. Not everybody's going into the parking garage. You see what I'm saying? There's only non-parking spaces, and I'm sure two or three of those have to be wheelchair parking spaces. Am I correct? Are we taking that into consideration? So you have possibly two or three wheelchair parking spaces, which leaves possibly only six regular parking spaces and cars going into a parking garage, which are using a key fob, that is going to take time, and you're saying that's not going to back up traffic?
I mean, even when there's no parking spot, it's not like they're going to be sitting in 19th waiting for a parking spot to open up. They're just going to leave, so...
Where they go and how they're getting out? Because, see, that was my next question. If there is no parking, how do they get out?
There's no parking for guests.
If there's no parking for guests, there's no parking for merchants, there's no parking there, how do they get out if they don't have a key to the gate? How do they turn around? Because there's a car behind them. There's no parking, because all the parking spaces are full. So how is this person going to get out?
That's a good question to the developer.
So a couple of points on parking design. The number of parking spaces we have in the garage is very much less than the requirement to have two exit points. There is also a various traffic study we perform on enclosed parking garage, which shows the amount of backup traffic that you have coming inside and going outside the parking. There is what is called a throat-dipped requirement that you need to have before your gate. That requirement is going to be met. And you have a portion of a parking lot which is dedicated to commercial parking, which is the retail users. That portion will have a spot on the back end, which is called a turnaround spot. So if anybody wants to come back, they go to the turnaround spot back around and go back in the same direction. So getting out of the parking is typically not an issue, that the congestion on the behind is actually the reason... That the congestion on the behind is actually the reasoning why we're not increasing the number of parking. We are limiting the number of parking as much as possible to be able to provide less congestion as much as possible. Typically on a student housing, you never see 100% occupied student housing. You have 90% occupancy. Uh, on a, on a perfect world, you have 80% of the parking being used. That 80% number does not accumulate enough for us to be able to provide a more throat-dept. So, right now at the number we are providing, one entry, one exit point, satisfies all the requirements and there is no additional need for that. And that being said, this is just a schematic, initial conceptual design that we are providing. We have not got into detail. There's gonna be various stages after this, which we will get into all those details and we will provide recommendation or updates to the plan to be able to accommodate any needs. All handicap parking and everything has been, the space for those has been accounted for in the current numbers. So, the number you are seeing has accounted those as well. So, the 315 number of parking we are talking about does include all the necessary handicap parking spot. We may not be showing it because this is a conceptual diagram, but it will accommodate all those parking spaces.
Also, if you'll notice, there's a, kind of a choke point at Boston Avenue with the eastbound traffic. The lane that turns into this is not a through lane. And so, if you're gonna turn into this, you're gonna have to merge to the right lane past Boston to turn into this. So, that, that entire lane can serve as a stacked lane in 19th and not back up through traffic.
Again, I wanna bring back up, it's like Ms. Leisure said, we're not really here debating much this project itself. We're looking about the land use. Is HDR compatible for this spot?
Chairman Bill, I'd like to call the question.
Okay. Call the question, okay. We have a motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Wood and a second by Mr. Gray. All in favor? Let's raise our hands. Please say aye, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So, motion carries eight to one. Seven to one, excuse me, we had one missing. This item will be forwarded to the city council for their consideration and that hearing will place, take place on February 25th at 2:00 PM. At this point, we are gonna take a five-minute break before we resume our deals. Let's say we'll be, well, let's say eight minutes. We'll be back at 8:20. Thank you. Let's call the meeting back to order. You're coming, you're coming. There she is. Okay, we have resumed our meeting at 8:20. The next item business is item 3.4, which is zone case 1794-k.
Hello, I'm Victoria and this is Zone Case 1794-K. The applicant is AMD Engineering LLC for Community Christian Church. They're requesting a zone change from HDR to AC. The subject property is south of 96th Street and west of Indiana Avenue. We sent out 54 notifications, receiving 11 back in opposition, one we received today. This is the mail-out notification map. We received two, this, um, two passes mapped creation, one of which is outside the boundaries. It'd be this one and then one today around over here. Some of the items of concern were noise, traffic, and decreasing property values. The aerial shows townhouses to the north, a church to the east and west, and vacant land to the south. The current zoning is HDR in the subject property, with HDR to the east and west, medium-density residential district to the north, and neighborhood commercial district to the south. The future land use map shows this property for commercial land uses. Here are some photos of the subject property and its surroundings. This is a site plan submitted by the applicant for the future development of a car wash. The proposed use is in conformance with the zoning ordinance and will be appropriate at this location. This request is compatible with the surrounding area and will not change the character of the existing development. This property is located south of 96th, designated as a local street, and west of Indiana Avenue, designated as a principal arterial by the thorough, master thoroughfare plan of 2018. Staff has no objections to this request and I can take any questions at this time.
Will we have any questions for staff at this time? Okay, thank you very much, Victoria. Is the applicant, or, now, open it up, the applicant hears the reference. Yeah, you know what you're saying, Will.
Yes, it's been a long night. Um, my name is Will Stevens. I'm with AMD Engineering at 651568 Street. Um, Victoria did a great job laying out kind of the groundwork for this, uh, request. Um, and also, side note, Mr. Goenon, it sounded like I didn't hear you make the car wash joke earlier. Won't blame you, won't blame you. So, yeah, this was a zone case that we felt like, um, was appropriate, given the, you know, the future Laney's plan and we felt like that we, um, weren't gonna have too much trouble with this one. Um, we were notified within the past week that there was, um, opposition. And so, over the past few days, we've, um, contacted as many of the neighbors that sent in letters as we could. We weren't able to contact everybody. Um, we did leave messages with everyone, but, um, those that we get, did talk to told us that they had concerns about traffic and noise, um, which you can expect. So, what we did is we, um, we felt like we needed to put a site plan together to kind of show what our plan is and we wanted that site plan to reflect, um, the concerns that the neighbors had. So, I'm gonna go to the site plan really quickly, point out a few things. See if this mouse worked, okay. So, along the, uh, west property line, you can see that we've denoted a masonry screen wall. So, that is an option in the UDC, uh, along your rear property line. Um, and this screen wall will be seven feet tall, as the code requires. And then along the north property line, we are not, uh, showing a driveway entrance. We felt like that was something critical that, uh, we wanted to show, is that there will be no traffic coming to or leaving the car wash, um, going to 96th Street. So, that was something that was important to us to show. Uh, and then in that same vein, along that north property line, will be required by code to build a buffer yard. That's another thing that the, uh, the UDC, uh, added last year. So, um, on top of those three things, um, we also tried to make an effort to shift our commercial driveway as far south on Indiana as we could, um, to, again, alleviate any kind of traffic concerns from that, uh, neighborhood. So, um, mighty wash corporate team is here, um, Will House, the developer, is also here. So, I'll be happy to answer any more questions if you have them. Thank you.
So, just to go back.
Sure.
To reiterate, nothing on 96th Street?
No, sir.
Just a buffer yard to block it off?
That's right.
The one entrance on Indiana, okay?
Yes, sir. So, that, and, and just to kind of add to the buffer yard, you know, that buffer yard will have a wooden fence and the, you know, it's required to have a certain amount of trees and shrubs per linear foot of, of the lot line there.
And that's on the north?
That's on the north side.
Okay. So, basically, it's gonna be blocked off, those neighbors won't be seen?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Are the vacuum cleaners in the middle part? One of the vacuums?
The vacuum cleaners will be in the middle part. Yes, ma'am.
Which type buffer did you end up using?
I believe it's a type C buffer yard, which is 15 feet in width. Yes.
Okay, I don't have any further questions for you at this time. Okay, is there anyone here to speak in opposition to this request? If so, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Marcus Hurd, uh, 3406-96th. I'm just north of what he describes as the buffer fence. And, um, uh, my, we have a great neighborhood between Indiana and Quaker. It's very beautiful, beautiful homes and, um, I get along with my neighbors fine. It's, it's an active community. And, um, I just wasn't ready for a commercial spot where it was, so close. Basically, when I walk out of my house, I'm gonna be looking straight at it. Uh, I, my house doesn't back up to it. I don't have a buffer from the back of my house or anything. When I come out of my front door and go to the, uh, the mailbox, that's what I'm gonna see. I'm gonna, evidently now, I'm gonna see a fence. So, I just know what fences look like, um, three and four years down the line, especially if it's a wooden fence. I would prefer, I wish the church would have been more successful there and built on the property, uh, or if residential homes could have been built there. So, um, it's just kind of a, when we got the notices, it was kind of a surprise that there was gonna be a zoning change to commercial and, uh, I'm just not ready for it. My land values are gonna go down. If I try to sell the house, I, I don't think, everybody that lives around me is retired. Uh, they're, they're what I call a garden home. So, there's two-bedroom, everything's two-bedroom, two-bath home. I have a feeling that if we don't like it, we can always move, but I think it's gonna cut down the number of people that would look at your property, knowing that the commercial is right across your viewing area, right across the street. And what I'm afraid of is that most people won't wanna live there and turn their places into rental property, which is not necessarily the greatest for the neighborhood. So, that's my concern.
Thank you. Anyone else here wishing to speak in opposition? Again, when you come forward, if you could, please state your name and address for the records.
My name is Billy Stelter and this is my husband, David. Appreciate you all taking your time to do this job. I know it's time-consuming and very confusing at times.
Could we go and get, get your address too, please?
Pardon me?
Your address?
3414-96th Street.
Okay, thank you.
I'm in one of the duplex, on the duplex that's gonna be across from this proposed...
It's also right north of it.
Yes. And I'm opposed to this zoning change because like the gentleman said, this is a wonderful neighborhood. Most of the people there are retired. And it's gonna decrease the value of the property.
That's her main concern is about what's it gonna do to, uh, the property, long-term effect, you know? Is someone gonna come in there and wanna purchase that or after this car wash goes in? So, is our value gonna go down or go up? You know, and, and, uh, also, we're concerned about the noise level. These automatic car washes make a lot of noise and you hear it pretty plainly, especially right across the street. You know, it's pretty annoying. You go outside, morning, noon, or night and all you hear is that vacuum. You go outside, morning, noon, or night, and all you hear is that vacuum, or not the vacuum, but that big blower blowing all the time, all the time, you hear that blower. Some people don't want that. Like the other gentleman said, this is a real quiet and real low-traffic area, and a lot of people like it that way. And I feel like this will be real disruptive to the neighborhood with the noise and the extra little bit of traffic we're going to experience from that. And also, like we said, the, what's it going to do to our property values? So, that's about all, all we have, I suppose, unless you have something else.
Well, it's just, along with the people going in and out of the car wash, if they turn around and go back down 96th to exit, there's water left off of their vehicles. And then there's trash and so forth that's going to be left there. And I'm just concerned that it's going to take the value away from the duplex community. And it is a good community. There's people there that have been there many years, and they enjoy living there. And it's like a complete home all along there. And I'm opposed to this, we both are. And I thank you for your time.
Yes, thank you.
And thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Again, please say your name and address. I get repetitive on that, but I got to do it.
You know, policy's policy. My name is Rachel Myers. I live at 9609 Ithaca, which you cannot see on the site plan. However, that, if you just go a little, which obviously you can't scroll north because it's a still photo. My backyard is basically right where that blue line is, where the west edge of that property, or the south edge of that property. I'm a work-from-home mom, as others have stated. It's basically a retirement community. I am the noisy neighbor with my five kids. And my husband originally developed the circle that we live in whenever he was working for Dan Wilson. We had no idea that there would even be the potential to have commercial property there. If we did, we probably would have made a different decision. Because Rain Tree is a really nice, really quiet neighborhood. Honey is a great school. We have lots of friends who live around there. And the thought of having, let me clarify. I also homeschool my kids. So, we're not, in addition to the retirees, we're there a lot. We're there a lot, a lot. And the idea of having the increased traffic, the increased noise, it's a little bit devastating for you to have that kind of shift in your lifestyle when you're used to having a quiet space. Now, do we hear traffic from Indiana? Sure, of course we do. We're just right there. But is it a car wash running all day with vacuums running all night? And I don't know if y'all have ever been through a car wash like this, but they have a really good time with some really loud music. And sometimes it's kid-friendly, and sometimes it is not. And I don't really want my four-year-old repeating some of those things. So, that's my emotional argument, is this would be really hard on my family because it would be an incredible distraction to our entire residential environment. My friends who do live in our circle are primarily retired. There's one family that's not. They're empty nesters, though, and a lot of their great-grandkids and grandkids play in the circle as well. And it really is just, it's a noise, a safety, as others have mentioned, a property value concern. I mean, you think you're doing a safe bet, this is going to sound, I'm sorry, it's going to sound ridiculous, but when you buy from Dan, you think you have a pretty safe bet on what you have because he builds high-quality homes, and we love them. And our neighbors have great homes. We had one neighbor who lived over on 96th who loved that area so much that she bought in our circle. She passed away in the last couple of years, but she stayed there the whole time because it's a great area. And there's a reason for that. And I think that changing the zoning to commercial would be an unfortunate event. Now, my rational, logical argument, you go down that entire street on Indiana, between 83rd all the way up to 98th, you have no commercial property openings. It's all residential. It's going to be a massive traffic increase. It changes effectively the whole line of that neighborhood, where you're going from houses, 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 car wash. And then you eventually get up to 98th, and you have other commercial properties because on the front face of 98th, that makes sense. It makes sense to have houses, or to have commercial properties there. But on 96th right here in Indiana, I mean, it really is neighborhood from front to back. And so, it is concerning. It's a precedent that I don't love. As Mr. Morris stated, right, Mr. Morris?
I'm Morris.
No, you're Terry Morris Scott-Glode. I'm sorry. Terry could go either way. We live in West Texas. I'm sorry.
I think that every day.
Okay, well, I apologize. And I'm probably going to butcher your name. Is it Mr. Galloin? Oh, good. I'm so glad. My maiden name was a nightmare. You're fortunate. Traffic is going to go up with a car wash, and it's going to be all dagum day. I mean, it's going to be start to finish. And I'm not trying to loop you in what you said, but it is the sentiment of everyone that lives in this area. And I think that's why you heard so much opposition and no one in favor that's around it. So, I did not, I don't think, initially received a letter because I think I am technically outside that line, but I did email y'all requesting to please consider, even those of us who may not have been in the initial area, because while we may be outside of that little mark, I mean, we are right there. So, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you for your time and comments. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition at this time?
Oh, I have something else.
Go ahead.
I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. I know it's bad. I'm so sorry.
Okay. Mr. Stevens. Bless him. He sent me the site plan. I talked to him earlier. Are you going to do our panel? Are you going to do CMU? Are you going to do wood? Like, what's the conversation here? And I see that he has the CMU block on that wall. I appreciate that. That's great. But it also takes out that additional buffer zone situation. So, I mean, if he does keep it, could it be block and then landscape? Just anything to keep the noise down. But also, please just don't improve it.
There are specific requirements they have to have for buffer yards that they have to do when they're saying it, so.
Right, with the fence part, as I understand it. But with cinder block, if I'm mistaken, I think with cinder block, they can come right up next to it. Yes, sir?
The front side of it will be? Oh, the rear, okay.
On the rear, if they do a seven-foot solid masonry fence, they do not have to do the landscape.
Okay.
That's pretty. So, okay, I'm sorry. I promise, that's it.
Thank you, no problem. Okay, once again, anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? If not, anybody wishing to speak in favor may come forward at this time. Again, please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, sir. My name is Anthony Ariano. I live on 1509 Yorkshire Avenue, Wolford, Texas, 79382. I am the Director of Operations for Mighty Wash, and I do want to address some of the concerns that these fellow people did have. One of the things was house value decreasing because the car wash is going to be there. No decrease in that value would go down at all. Nothing that we build out there is going to decrease that value. I've actually worked for several companies that build in residential areas and those houses, using Mr. Car Wash off of 82nd and Homestead as an example. There's housing right behind it. The development has actually gone up in price over the past couple of years. Nothing that the car wash has affected in any way. And so, again, the land value there and the price value of the housing development in that area shouldn't be affected at all by that. It would be other factors that went into it that would decrease that value. Other things that I wanted to address here, the traffic coming in off of Indiana, we're not going to increase the traffic. We're actually just pulling the traffic that's already going from that area initially. Again, we have six other locations in Lubbock. We're going to continue to build more. So, we're not trying to push them all towards one location. We're actually spread out over the entire area so that we're not affecting traffic or congestion in any way. We want to be good stewards of what we do and what we build, and we want to be very genuine to all of our neighbors by saying, whenever we build these things, we take all that into consideration. Another thing is, I know that this community is a tight-knit community. We also like to invest in our communities that we get involved with. We're very involved with Lubbock with multiple programs, just a couple of names. The United Way, Mills on Will's, One Voice. We also take part in High Point Village off of Milwaukee. So, we invest with all these things, and we want to be part of your community as well. We would not try to break that up in any way. And so, again, any way that we can open our ears to work with you guys, we absolutely would. And the biggest thing that I heard was the noise complaint. Now, we did a study not too long ago at all that actually factors into this. One, one of the things that goes out, 10-foot out of the tunnel, you're sitting at about 91.2 decibels. That's going to be somewhat loud. You're talking about cars, sporting events, snowmobiles, lawn mowers, power tools, blenders, hair dryers. Now, as you get 20 feet outside of the tunnel, it's going to go down. You're actually looking at about an 85.6 decibel range, which is your normal alarm clock, or just the traffic driving up and down the street naturally. Once you get 50 feet away, it's going to be moderate. That's going to be rainfall or normal conversation, like we're having right now. And as you get 75 feet away, it's going to be somewhat of a whisper, or again, a quiet library. That's the decibel level that it's at, 75 feet outside of the tunnel. But not only do we stop there, we also have what we call power locks on all of our systems that actually suppress the sound that comes off of the blowers. So, even though it sounds like it's extremely loud inside the tunnel, that's because you're there. Everything inside your vehicle is actually intensified by about three times. So, even though I'm talking to you guys like this, inside of your vehicle, it almost seemed like I was yelling just because it amplifies it inside the vehicle. So, again, being outside the vehicle does sound loud in that moment, but as you get further and further away from what the actual equipment is doing, it actually lessens. And so, these are just some of the things that I wanted to address while I was up here. And so, if y'all have any questions for me?
I have none at this time.
I have a quick question. What time do you open and what time do you close?
So, we open at 7:30 in the morning, and we close at 7:00 PM. So, all of our equipment is off by 7:15. Even the vacuums, they do not stay on overnight, and everything is shut down, turned off by that time as well.
Is this Monday through Sunday?
Yeah.
And Sunday, we actually open at 12 o'clock and close at 7:00.
Is that even during the summer, or is that just your winter hours?
So, that's all year-round. We keep the hours the same.
Okay, thank you. Now, I know some places, when you got more light, they still open later, so.
Yeah, but we've noticed that even fluctuating that, at that last hour, you're really not getting a lot more customers. You keep it year-round, becomes more consistent.
And it becomes more cost-effective.
Yes, sir.
For you that way. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this proposal? If not, we'll close the public hearing for matter of discussions. Do we have a motion and a second?
I'll make a motion. To approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second? Is there any discussion?
I think, as I look at this, HDR is the current zoning right there. And I think we just talked about HDR quite a bit.
Yeah.
And what that could mean. And, you know, in a lot of ways, I think this could be of much better use up and down Indiana. Is there not another car wash further south on Indiana?
Yeah, there's one on about 125th.
125th or so?
And then there's another one on 83rd in Indiana. So, this is kind of in between.
This has kind of already been somewhat a precedent up and down Indiana to this point. I think the screening walls will help. You may continue talking to the neighbors about how the screening walls look and the impacts that they'll have. But I can't see how a seven-story apartment complex would be much less intense.
Well, you're going on the retaining walls. I don't know why they're looking, I hate to say this to them, but I usually go to one of their competitors down Indiana, and they have their retaining wall is not just, it's black, it fits in with the stuff, it's more decorative than just somebody thinking of cinder block for it, so. Any other questions, comments?
I would just say, I mean, if you're looking at the aerial map, I mean, I don't know that single-family houses would fit there in this particular location, or even if on the site directly to the south of it. I think it's going to need to be commercial, just because of where it sits, in front of the church, on Indiana. I mean, it would be, it would be kind of weird to have houses right there with the church right behind it.
Then you've got even to the south, it's a neighborhood commercial already.
Yeah, exactly.
Is it, Kristen, is it one that, is it the AC? Neighborhood commercial would not allow a car wash, right?
Correct.
A car wash, okay. Just wanted to clarify, that was what my thinking was.
That's tough because it is further in from our traditional commercial node. But being where it is, for me, it seems like a good fit.
Any other questions, or would y'all like to call the question? Okay, well, go ahead and call the question. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Nay.
Passes seven to one. Again, this will go to City Council for their consideration on February 25th at 2:00 PM. Next item is item 3.5, Zone Case 296-F.
All right, this is Zone Case 2916F. The applicant is SK Architecture Group LLC. They're requesting a zone change from IP to AC. The subject property is south of 82nd Street and west of Upland Avenue. We sent out 28 notifications, receiving one back in favor. This is the mail-out notification map. The aerial shows commercial warehousing to the north, offices to the east and west, and vacant land to the south. The zoning to the northwest and south is IP. The east is office district. The future land use map shows this property for heavy commercial land uses. Here are photos of the subject property and the surrounding areas. This is a site plan submitted by the applicant for the future development of retail and office building, along with a few renderings. The proposed use is in conformance with the zoning ordinance and will be appropriate at this location. This request is compatible with the surrounding area and is still appropriate along Upland Avenue, even with a more restrictive commercial district. This property is located south of, yeah, this property is located along Upland Avenue, which is designated as a principal arterial by the master therfa plan of 2018. Staff has no objections to this request, and I can take any questions at this time.
Is there any questions for staff at this time? Thank you very much. Is the applicant or his or her representative here? Again, when you come forward, please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. This is Gabriel Sanchez, 8355 Upland Avenue, with SK Architecture Group. So, we are requesting the downzone of these two parcels from industrial park zoning to neighborhood commercial zoning. The current industrial park zoning imposes significant setbacks, making it both lots largely unusable for development. Each lot is approximately 100 feet in width, with an access easement running down the center, which results in limited buildable area due to the required front and rear setbacks. While most of our titted use mix of retail and personal service tenants would generally conform to the allowed uses under industrial park zoning, the setbacks imposed by the zoning would leave no feasible building area with the lots without a variance. Changing to neighborhood commercial would eliminate these excessive setbacks, making the property developable and allow us to create a functional space that serves a community. The proposed zoning change would facilitate a more practical and efficient development consistent with surrounded areas' needs and character. We believe this request will better support the long viability and growth of the site while maintaining the integrity of the neighborhood.
And I'm here if you have any questions.
Any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to this request? Okay, say none, anyone in speaking in favor? Say none, we'll close the public hearing for matter of discussion. Do we have a motion? Move to approve. Have a motion by Mr. Wood? And a second by Tarek? Discussion?
It's a down zoning.
Yeah, down zoning, pretty much. Okay. See no other questions, go ahead and call the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries eight to nothing. Well, again, we'll go to City Council on February 25th. One other item, now we'll move to other business to discuss the action of 25 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting schedule.
So, there was a question about our scheduled July 3rd meeting potentially being an issue the day before a holiday. So, if there is any discussion on that meeting date, or any of the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting dates, we can discuss those or potentially have a motion and a vote to move any of those.
Yeah, I brought this up because I was just thinking, I'm not going to be here July 3rd.
No, July 3rd. I think every date looks good except for that one.
Okay. And I was just told... And I was just told we don't need a vote, it can just be a consensus.
Okay, so can we just push it back to the following Thursday?
I would recommend making it earlier on Tuesday, July 1st, if that's possible.
All right.
That's fine, we can move it to the following week, and we'll adjust the council dates accordingly.
The first week of the month is all board meetings, and so, we're going to be same with other board meetings on the Tuesday night.
Okay. So, Tuesday, July 8th?
I think...
Or Thursday, July 10th?
I'm okay with either one. Y'all's thoughts, Tuesday or Thursday after the 4th?
Actually, Tuesday, July 8th, we cannot, there is a council meeting that day, so it would have to be the 10th.
The 10th.
Okay, 10th, everyone good?
Okay.
All right.
That sounds good. That includes our business, and it is...
Ready?
8:50, meetings adjourned. You owe us.
Oh, now you say.